What bothered you?
The remain.
That's scary.
All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the USD 290 Board of Education meeting. It is November 23rd, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We will call this meeting to order and go ahead and do a roll call. Please raise your hand and say present when your name is called. Lynda Alderman.
Present.
Chris Cunningham.
Present.
Julie D'Andrio. Present. Susan Moore.
Present and muted.
Perfect. Shanta Olmstead.
Present.
Melodya Payne.
Present.
Harold Wingert.
Present.
We have seven board members present this evening. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. That was moved by Lynda Alderman and seconded by Chris Cunningham. All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 7-0. We do not have any items on the consent agenda tonight. We do have two comments from the public, which I will read. The first comment comes from Lilly and Carl. This was submitted on November 17th, 2020, and it reads, "I have been concerned and anxious about returning to school full time. So many schools around our community have closed down. It's only a matter of time before there's a COVID-19 case from within Ottawa High School. What's the plan of action should a case come from within the school? And how far will this have to go before we are sent home?" That ends that comment. The second comment, the date noted here is September 23rd, but I'm pretty sure it was meant to be November 23rd of 2020. This is from Jared Creach, and it reads, "Remote learning. The CDC stated, the CDC said, 'The safest place for a student is it is school. We need to keep the students there until there is no option because they won't be utilizing the safety measures at home that are available here. Not to mention more screen time is not helping at all. Safety is number one, so school is where these kids need to be.'" And that ends this comment. And just a reminder that we do take comments up until prior to the board meeting, usually the Friday before, the noon of if you're in person and you just come in and submit those comments at the office, or you can email and have it done that way as well. Okay, we do have an executive session that we are going to start off with tonight. If somebody would like to read the recommended action statement to take us to executive session, we will need about 15 minutes, and we will invite Dr. Cobb to join us and Mike Norris to join us.
I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma, and that the board return to the open meeting at 7:20?
That's fine.
Okay. In this room, the executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest, and I also move that Dr. Cobb and our attorney, Mike Norris, be part of this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's moved by Lynda Alderman and seconded by Harold Wingert that we move into executive session. All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 7-0. We are adjourned to executive session. Is there a second? Oh. Are we good?
Yes.
Is there a motion to resume regular session? So moved. Is there a second?
Second, everybody.
All in favor, please raise your hand. That passes 6-0. We do need to go back into executive session for 10 more minutes if somebody would please read the recommended action statement again.
Madam President, I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma, and that the board return to the meeting at 7:35?
7:40.
7:40.
I think we need 15.
In this room, the executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest, and I move that Mike Norris and Dr. Cobb also be part of this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Lynda Alderman and seconded by Chris Cunningham that we move into executive session. All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 7-0. Okay, it is 7:40. Is there a motion to resume regular session?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Harold Wingert and seconded by Linda Alderman that we resume regular session. All in favor, please raise your hand, and that passes 7-0. All right, we are moving to the part, probably have lots of viewers tonight looking on and watching this part as we talk about reopening. Dr. Cobb is going to update us with some gating criteria and remote options, and then we also have Dr. Ransome here to answer some questions.
Yeah, so I want to thank Dr. Ransome for coming in tonight and being available to answer any questions you might have of him, but I want to take a look at the gating criteria first and foremost as we come in. This is something that we've looked at every Monday night of our board meetings for the last several months, and what you can see probably on your screens, probably a little more difficult to view at home, is that, you know, that top line, which is your rate per 100,000 has ballooned pretty significantly in the last month and a half. But the positive of that is that we saw an increase and a spike right around Halloween, but those numbers are beginning to come down. On 11-1, we were up to 610.7 per 100,000, and as of this week, that is down to 379.7 per 100,000. So it's a pretty significant decrease, although we do know that right around the corner is yet another event with Thanksgiving that I think has certainly created some anxiety and some concern that we'll see more positive cases out of that. Currently, we're sitting at just under 20% positivity rate in terms of our testing, and Dr. Ransome can answer questions about that if people have them. This number fluctuates by, really daily at times as new numbers come into KDHNE. I continue to update them. As of 11-15, that rate was 15.8% of all tests were coming back positive. And again, we see two things that do create some need for conversation as to where the numbers come from. So the hospital rate is still, we need to remember that it is the entire Northeast region that Ottawa is in. So currently, there, according to this, there's plenty of hospital beds available, but I know that in the metro area, that may not be the case, and certainly there's some concern with that. The other thing is our trend is going down, which is nice that we see some green blocks on there, but although the trend may be down, the actual rate is still pretty significant and just under 400 persons per 100,000. So it's nice to see some green up there, but it's also important for us to understand where that comes from. So as we look at the gating criteria, I think it's important for us to put into perspective what that means for schools, because these are our county numbers, and certainly there are a number of variables when we look at what goes into these figures. But when we look at school specifically, and since COVID-19 has about a two-week incubation period, I have been giving you numbers every two weeks of how this is impacting students and staff, and I think it's significant for us to realize that as of right now, from what would have been, today's the 23rd, so from 11-9 to 11-23, the positive rate of students is less than 1%, significantly less than 1%. But without identifying buildings, which ultimately might lead to identification of students, it's at .27%, .27. So that's, think about this, is 27 10,000ths, in essence, is what we're talking about here, right? So .27%, .29%, .57%, .57%, and .55% across our district. So less than 1%, really, if you look overall, less than a half a percent overall through our district. Even if we look at students who have been sent home or currently have been exposed, the data that I get from our nursing staff includes all students who are exhibiting any symptoms that may be misconstrued as COVID. So even if they're not COVID symptoms, student goes home with asthmatic symptoms and struggling breathing, so on and so forth, they're going to wind up on this list for us to follow through with, right? So our nurses are doing a great job of ensuring that our schools are safe, that we're following through with all persons who are having any types of issues in our school, to ensure that we don't have anybody coming back to school that shouldn't be there that would put anybody else at risk. But even at that, the average number of students who would be identified as any type of symptom, not necessarily being identified with COVID symptoms, but with any type of symptoms that may be related to COVID, is an average of less than 5% of our total population. So there are not a lot of numbers that would indicate that we're seeing an issue at school. I think Dr. Ransome would share in that and certainly indicate that we're not seeing transmission at school, we're not seeing it from student to student, we're not seeing it from student to teacher, or teacher to teacher, or teacher to student. The mitigating protocols that we have in place have worked, they're substantial, we're not seeing huge issues. The area of concern for us is with staff, and this is prompting the conversation. In the last two weeks, we had, I think I counted 23, but let me count here real again, 10, 16, 24. We had 24 staff members miss time in the last two weeks based upon some sort of COVID issue, right? Now, we don't have very many that have tested positive, but we certainly have staff who have, students that are quarantined, not necessarily testing positive, right, but students who are quarantined maybe by exposure, or maybe exhibiting symptoms, or maybe awaiting test, whatever it happens to be. But all of our staff has to go through those things, 24 staff members out is significant, even though our data would indicate that our students and staff are not necessarily at a high level of risk for any of these things while being in school. But it's certainly impacting our ability to continue to host school, right? So that data is significant, certainly significant in that the environment that we've created for our students statistically is very safe, incredibly safe. is very safe, incredibly safe. Our major concern is ensuring that we continue to staff it appropriately and knowing that we are going to have to do some different things as we cover staff. So with that being said, before we go any further, I want to make sure that anybody can ask Dr. Ransome any questions if you'd like to come up here with me. I know that he doesn't want to stick around for the entire conversation. So I know that there's at least some questions about masks and athletics. We'll go ahead and answer those questions or ask those questions here and let him respond and see if there are any other questions for him. We'll see what we got.
Okay, I'll just start around. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Ransome? If not, that's fine. I just want to make sure everyone.
I have a question, but I'm not sure it could be answered. And you've probably already told us this.
Probably not.
I am just curious. I know we cannot identify students, but I do have one question. If a teacher has a student in class, is that teacher notified that she has been around a student that has tested positive?
Yes, as well as the students in the class and their parents.
So is that in a general email from the Health Department?
So we help facilitate those conversations in part because the county is overwhelmed with things.
Right.
So it's just one of the things that we've done to try to help this process. So we help them with contact tracing. We also help them with communication about recommendations from the County Health Department. So part of our job is to ensure that our teachers, our students, and their parents are aware of any exposure that may have taken place within our schools. So if that exposure does take place, typically, the information that we get from the Health Department will identify who may be recommended for quarantine, or if quarantines are even needed. So because of our protocols, the vast majority of times, we've not need to do any things other than tell families, "There was an exposure. Please be very cognizant of symptoms with your students. If there are symptoms, you need to contact the Health Department or your doctor immediately." But yes, that goes out to.
So just be, okay.
Parents, students.
And staff.
Well, not to students, but it goes to their parents and to staff.
Thank you.
Chris, did you have any questions for Dr. Ransome specifically?
No, I don't.
Okay, I don't know if it's necessarily for Dr. Ransome or for both of you. So if we have staff that is out, then that means that the students from that person's class, they are then going to other classes. Is that right?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, okay.
If we have a staff member that is out, we have.
Step up, step up to microphone so the people can hear you.
So if we have a staff member that is out, if they are capable of remoting into their classroom, they continue to teach their classroom remotely. So they may be from home using big blue button to remote into their classroom. And what we've provided in the classroom is an adult who can supervise, but the instruction continues to come from the teacher in a remote environment. So kind of the converse of what we would see if students were gone. Teachers are gone, they're going to continue to do that work, and they've done a great job of it thus far. If they are ill, then we provide a sub in that space and we continue, just like we would on any other day when we needed a substitute.
But that's where we're having issues, is finding subs.
Yes. Multiple issues in which teachers are covering for one another and that sometimes we're using non-certified staff to cover those positions.
Okay, are you going to go around again, or should I ask them all right now?
No, just questions for Dr. Ransome, so he can leave.
I was wondering about the two winter sports that are coming up, the wrestling and the, and I know we're going to talk about it later, the wrestling and the basketball. You know, I know some districts are requiring masks while those games are being played. What's the safety factor of kids that are that close to one another and if they do play with masks? How safe are they?
I don't think there's any studies that demonstrate. I've been looking to see if there is something. And I haven't found anything that really addresses the safety, you know, factor. We know that if both parties are wearing masks, it's relatively safe. Now, you get in an athletic environment where everybody's breathing hard and really face-to-face, or closer. I think we don't know what, I mean, it's probably better than no mask, but I don't know that we can say it's safe. I think there is, there are some recent studies that show that wearing masks does not substantially impair your ability to maintain satisfactory oxygenation even with vigorous activity. So, and you don't retain CO2 in spite of what some people have said. You know, there's pretty good studies on that, small, but still done correctly. So that's not the issue. How safe it is, what's the capacity of transmitting between competitors? I don't think anybody can say. It's better with a mask than without, but is it really safe? I don't know. As far as indoor athletics, I'm more concerned about the crowds than the kids. Or potentially, anyway, unless that's well-controlled.
Did you have anything else, Linda?
No, that's all.
Dr. Ransome, thank you for coming. And I do have one question. It looks like our numbers in the schools have stayed very low. And we're doing the things that are advised by the county as far as masks and cleaning and such. Do you have any specific concerns about students returning from the break where there can be larger gatherings? Sorry, and then assembling again back in the schools? As long as we continue our good practices, is that anything that we should be concerned about?
Returning from assemblies?
Returning from Thanksgiving break when there may have been groups assembled.
Sure. I mean, I think that is a real, that's true for all of us. I mean, if in fact people are not heeding all these recommendations they've been hearing about trying to avoid big family gatherings and group gatherings, it's going to increase the risk. I mean, there's going to be increased incidents. And so, but when they come back to class, if you maintain those procedures that you have, it still should be relatively safe for the other kids.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, I have a few questions. And I thank you for deferring time, no, anyway. You've answered my number one question I was going to ask about masks and sports. So I understand there's no studies going forward. I also appreciate that you can't say one way or the other. But I guess my question would be then, let's go backwards. We've had football, which are pretty close contact, I hear. You know, I hear sometimes we tackle people, we land on top of each other. We share the same football occasionally. Did we see a huge spike during football season in high school or middle school?
No, I don't believe we did.
Okay. So, and I understand football's different than basketball, but it's somewhat of a comparison. You know, it's different than cross-country. I'm not going to compare that to cross-country. I think the other thing that I looked at is, the number you just gave us was, you know, .27 up to .5. I was trying to type real quick. I'm real good at math. That's about 20 times, if we have a 10% threshold, which we adopted earlier this year. And I think that came from either the Kansas or maybe even the county. So we have a 10% threshold, and I guess what I'm saying is we're 20 times below that threshold right now. So we talked about all these COVID cases, but am I missing something that we really don't see a lot of, from the volume of COVID cases we were anticipating maybe by passing that policy? I echo what you're saying, is I think we're significantly lower than what we thought. Is that a fair statement?
Significantly lower?
A rate of COVID within the school system. Because we passed a policy that said at 10% would be our threshold.
Yeah, you're well within that.
That's what I was going to say. And so then the other question, and I was going to say is, from test results, we're getting the results back quicker, right?
No.
Oh, we're not?
We were briefly, but the last two weeks, we have not. The system's overwhelmed.
Okay.
Both the state and the private labs are overwhelmed. It's taking five to seven days sometimes to get results.
Is it really?
Which just really, really makes it impossible to maintain, you know, to really follow up like we'd like to. We do have the capability of doing some rapid tests, but they're very limited. And we're reserving those for particular situations where somebody may put a lot of people at risk or, you know, a healthcare worker or somebody. Hopefully, we'll have more of those tests, but right now, they're limited.
Okay. My last question, and this is hypothetical going into future. But I mean, and it's a little bit unfair, but you know more than I do. Our students will be safe, but this vaccine that's coming out, potentially, we hear by the end of the year, okay? I know people say when, what, our teachers on the upper echelon, it would seem like to me that we would want to protect our teachers' population. Is there a way that we can allocate or work with through you, the county, or the hospital or something to expedite our teachers for those who do want the vaccine? I understand maybe not all people want it.
If it was my choice, yes, I would say so, but I don't think I'm going to have too much to say about that. They are certainly higher than, they're higher than some, but I don't know exactly what that criteria is going to be.
Definitely criteria.
As I think you've all heard, it's healthcare workers, extremely at-risk elderly. And then others that, you know, really are extremely important in keeping our society running, and teachers are there.
I was just going to say, my personal thought is they're high. They're not as high as healthcare workers, on the front line. I get you, what you're saying. Okay. I'll defer to Susan and.
Susan, do you have some questions for Dr. Ransome?
I don't. Just keep up the good fight, Dr. Ransome.
Hi, Susan.
Melody, do you have some questions for Dr. Ransome?
Sorry. Linda brought up the indoor, the winter sports. And so we actually have a little data because I know people forget about it, but we have been playing middle school basketball, girls' basketball. It's almost over. And so I know that our team has not had problems. Are there other districts in our county that have had large problems with their middle school girls' basketball team?
I think there was, there have been some problems in the county, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's overwhelming.
Okay. And then as far as the, I know we're going to talk about it later, but I'm not sure how long you're going to be here. As far as the masks for while playing sports, from what research I've done, from what I read, that once the masks get wet from the breathing, the heavy breathing and stuff, that they're basically useless. Is that your position?
It certainly, it does impair their effectiveness. And I don't think anybody's recommending the paper masks like this because they do get wet and, you know, do sweat and as well as deep breathing and stuff. So cloth masks that you could change with some frequency are probably the best solution. But I don't know that there's any studies about that. I think it's empiric.
All right. Dr. Ransome, thank you so much for.
That's it? You made it through.
Yes, thank you so much for coming to speak to us. We appreciate it. Appreciate all that you're doing for our county and our schools.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. Okay, so let's get to the crux of this. I think it's important to understand the volume of work and the effort that all of our staff are putting in every day to ensure that an in-person environment can continue and that we can keep our kids safe in our schools. I think the middle school last week had four of five substitutes unfilled, which means that we were supplanting people all over the place. I know that we've got one substitute, or one teacher who has a counterpart in their area that has been out and ultimately is taking both classes into one giant group room, spreading them out, covering 35 kids in a class or whatever at a single time. These are things that our staff does. And this is, you know, this has been a part of what we've asked our staff to do over the course of time, many of which we've seen have conversations with us about, hey, when we can't find a sub, we do this. And there are pieces of our negotiated agreement that would address some of those things. And we're in a different territory here, and we're asking our staff to do a lot of things. I think it is important for us to recognize the effort, the amount of work that our staff has put in, the exhaustion that is currently at place here with our staff that every day is management, is getting through, getting through day to day. Our staff is the force that continues to make this district a great place and a great place for our kids. And the reason that we can tout the numbers that we have because our staff does all of the things that they need to do to help our kids be safe. With that being said, it has always been my approach to present this board information in a manner that we first and foremost do what's best for students. And that our role here is to do what is best for students. And as we continue to talk about how we move forward with this, it would be my opinion and our recommendation, my recommendation to you, that we take no action tonight and that we continue to have our students attend school in person each and every day. It is, and having conversations with our administrative staff, and we spend lots of time talking about this. We've had extensive meetings to discuss staff feelings, student feelings, parent feelings, administrator feelings. Certainly, they have feelings in this as well, and they have done an incredible amount of work. I mean, just, our administrative staff is in part the group that is dealing with contact tracing. I can tell you today that Mrs. Whitaker herself spent two hours dealing with contact tracing. And that doesn't leave much time in the day for the other things when we as a group spent two and a half hours dealing with accreditation processes and then you've got the time that you're dealing with contact tracing, communicating with parents, and all of the things that go along with COVID. It is an exhausting venture. But Mrs. Whitaker would also be the first person to tell you that if those things help keep her students and staff safe, then she's more than willing to do so. And I think that's the stance of all of the staff members that we have in USD 290. So again, my recommendation is that we take no action, that we continue to meet in person with our students at all grade levels, pre-K through 12. But I also think that it is important that this board recognizes a couple of things when we do so. First, that not every one of our classrooms is going to be filled with a licensed instructor. This is something that KSDE has even recognized and given us a little latitude in doing so, that it doesn't necessarily have to occur that way because of the circumstances that exist around this and the lack of personnel that exist on all fronts. We've had openings for aides, openings for pairs, openings for substitutes, openings for all of those things. And there's not a lot of people out there that are really interested in working in schools right now for obvious reasons, except for our teachers who come to work every day, prepared to do what they need to do for the benefit of our students. And I certainly appreciate and applaud their efforts. And knowing that that is the case, I think it's important, I currently have the authority to cancel school. And I do so with snow days all the time. I shouldn't say all the time, but when we have snow, I make the decision about whether or not we attend school. I think it's important for us to recognize that that authority needs to extend to situations in which we're dealing with staffing shortages as well. And when we absolutely cannot do it, that there may come a time when we need to make some decisions about a building going remote, not our entire district, but a building for a certain period of time. Our expectation would be that we get through the day, do whatever we need to do to get through the day. If we're pulling staff from one building or another, if we're utilizing central office staff to cover those things. But it is not a great situation to do that for long periods of time. And if we need to make that decision to go remote for two days, three days, seven days, whatever it happens to be, that we have the ability to do so and communicate to parents that we're going to need to do so in order to provide the best level of instruction that we can for our students. But that would be my recommendation for the night, and I would certainly be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have about what that recommendation is.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Cobb's? Yes, Shanda?
As far as subs are concerned, you say we're short-staffed. Is that due to the times we are experiencing? Are we, are substitutes declining in numbers we can pool from? Can you maybe elaborate on that a little bit?
So there's a couple of things. One, we added three staff members that have not yet come to work with us. yet come to to work with us for for a number of reasons. We should start seeing them after Thanksgiving break. Some of them are not done with school yet. Some of them had identified that they couldn't return until that time. So we have several positions that are being filled with long-term subs, which would typically be our substitute pool. The biggest concern that we have is that the the amount of time that people are out. So we don't have a huge sub pool to begin with, and it's it has dwindled. We've had conversations about subs for several years. This year is worse because it's COVID and and not everybody wants to do it, nor does everybody feel like they have the ability to do it. So remember that we're living in a technical age. Many of the substitutes that we have would come in and be a manager of 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 school. Now we're asking to manage a techn- a technological environment, and some of them are very fearful of that and creates anxiety even more so than maybe COVID does. One of the things that we have to remember about how quarantine works, it's so we we might see staff out for 28 days where if you have if you if you test positive, we might see a 14-day quarantine. But if if I'll use Josh as an example, if Josh is my child, he's older than me, by the way, so this couldn't couldn't occur. But let's just say that Josh was my child. If he tests positive, I'm quarantining with him because I'm the parent, right? And that's that's what I'm supposed to do. My quarantine doesn't start until he quits exhibiting symptoms. And at that point, I'm on quarantine for 14 days beyond that. So you may see our staff have extended quarantines, not just 14 days. They're not quarantined just the same time that their kids are quarantined. Their quarantine doesn't really start until their child is done with their quarantine and no longer exhibiting symptoms. So you're talking about long-term effects of of our staff being gone. Now, if we can remote in and we can do those things, that's a huge positive for us in terms of of dealing with with instruction. We still have to have an adult in the room to manage the environment, right? So there's where you start pulling staff from other places to ensure that that somebody can can take care and and make sure that our kids are engaging in the conversation with our staff and doing what they're supposed to be doing. Because as great as technology is, it does not account for proximity or for student interaction in terms of being close with with students and making sure that we can help them achieve the desired results. So hopefully that answers the question.
That does. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Cobb's?
Yeah. So when we're pulling the staff back and forth, and maybe that's their planning period, and now they're covering a classroom, can CARES money be used to pay those stipends since it's COVID-related?
Already is. Sparks dollars are being used to cover some of those things. I just got so the high school works differently than than our other buildings in terms of how we how we cover for one another. So at the elementaries, we've had discussions about classes moving into other classes and teachers taking on more students. The high school and the middle school level, they cover particular periods based upon their planned time, and they get paid extra duty for that time. So I just got the list of of extra duty. I think it was 28 different staff members totaling almost $1,000 in additional efforts. But we will we will ask for that money to be reimbursed through our Sparks funds and bring it back so that they can continue to get paid for that. That's for sure.
And I'll just add one thing. One, I think what we have all done from top to bottom during this whole COVID-19 is everyone has risen to the occasion, and we just somehow someway seem to always make it happen. So I'm going to go back on something that I think I've said before, is I worry about the slide and we talk about summer slide. I think we can call it the COVID slide now when it comes to education. And I I'm fearful of ever having to go all the way back to remote because we all, I think, would agree that that's a nightmare when it comes to educating our kids. So I'm not, I guess, dumb enough to think that it won't ever happen. I would just hope that we can isolate if we have to go remote somewhere, whether it's a few classrooms or whatever, just because I don't know how we'll ever make this up. This will be a long-lasting impact we see on our society with our kids. It is going to have an effect. I think we're silly to think it won't. I just think that our protocols, I think, are proving their own evidence that it's working, and we just need to keep to the path.
I agree with what Chris said. I worry every day about the education of our children and what we're going to see down the road with everything that they're missing. But and so I I agree with you that we need to stay in person as long as we can. I think it's very, very important. Two things. I I I know the teachers are under an incredible amount of stress, and I think we as a board need to recognize that and and have empathy, if nothing else. But I mean, they're under incredible amount of pressure right now and anxiety and stress. And I just want to say that. And I know what I understand.
I think it's important to to understand the world that teachers live in, and that it questions and accountability come at them from multiple measures, come from parents, come from students, come from administrators, come from the board, come from their peers. And it's just this constant barrage and not that one of the things that makes the world that we live in right now, specifically regarding COVID, so difficult is that the we are definitively split. And when I say we, I mean, people in general, our community is is split on on how we respond. I'm fairly positive that you all got a number of emails regarding athletics. It would be interesting to to ask the question if you received the same number of emails regarding remote learning as you did about playing athletics. Because something tells me that that it was very lopsided in that, that we didn't see, nor have we heard, large outcries about remote instruction from our families. Now, we've gotten some, but I think there's probably a significant situation in which if we were to say that sports were going to be canceled, we'd have a very different conversation on our hands. There's there's lots of things that begin to to weigh in here, and the academic piece of it is the one that we need to focus on the most. And taking care of our staff who have to work in this environment was expected to address all of those issues at a time when there is anxiety rolling through everybody. You heard from a student tonight that is talking about it. We've heard from students in the past. We heard we hear it from from teachers. We hear it from administrators. We hear it from community members. We hear it from a doctor standing here today who certainly has concerns. All of those things lead to stress and, for lack of a better term, exhaustion. And 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 this break probably couldn't come at a better time. Our teachers need to get away from it for a little bit. But if we can get through the next three weeks and get through Christmas vacation, then certainly we put ourselves in a pretty good spot to get through the remainder of the year.
They've just basically suffered whiplash since March. They really have.
That's true.
But the other thing that that I'm wondering about is that should someone be on the elementary level, should a teacher be sick and we have to, you know, split the class? Does that impact distancing?
Yeah, we tried really hard not to do that. We we it would be an absolute last resort. And if we had to do it, we would probably move them to to a bigger space. But that's not what we're it's not what they've been doing. They've been pulling staff from from title. They've been pulling staff from from special ed at times, pulling staff from all over the place to ensure that we can keep those kids co-horted in their room with the group that they're supposed to be with.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Cobb's?
I'm going to repeat myself because I think it's worth repeating. The numbers you gave tonight is .27 up to .5 depending on the building, is 20 to 40 times lower than what we said we voted on in here in August or September. So I understand that there's some concern out there about COVID in the buildings, but it's so much lower than what we even remotely thought possible. Because we were thinking that we were going to have, you know, let's just put this way, significant cases. And we still may. I'm not saying we aren't going to. But I just want people to understand that I think that bodes well for what our staff, our maintenance staff, our janitorial staff, our teachers, the dedication they're doing, not only to educating our kids, but then keeping the environment safe, keeping it clean, and not sacrificing and saying, I'm going to give up one for the other. I think it's amazing that they've done both. And so I just want people to know that that that's going on. And then second of all, I know that we have got more on sports than we are. And since I was such a stud athlete in high school, not. But I do recognize the value that sports brings. Okay. And I even recognize value for sports when you're not even an athlete, you know, what the other ancillary, your cheer or your band or, you know, your something or just school pride and and what that means. So I do appreciate that we're going forward with sports, you know, and trying to make it work, even if you have to wear a mask, and none of us like to wear masks or other things. Yeah, I do think that is important. I think that's part of the education. And I would also echo that it's just not sports. There's, you know, FFA, and there's SBLA, and there's other things as well that we're allowing to go on. And I think it's amazing those teachers are finding ways and sponsors. So I think it's the cumulative effect of what we're saying is, hey, we're going to provide for a rounded education. And that's what I appreciate as well. So thank you for keeping that going on to the administrators and sponsors and coaches and things that put in those extra efforts as well.
Susan, did you have any questions for Dr. Cobb's or comments?
I don't think so. It's all in an experiment. And we can see that our mitigation strategies work. And so in the community at large, we've got to all step up and be adults. I would theorize, or I would say, from my standpoint, our kids need to be in school. They deserve to be in school. They need to be able to learn. We're going to lose a lot as it is. And so as people who are thinking human beings, we've got to be out there supporting them and focusing on them by wearing our masks in public and distancing, using hand sanitizer and all those things that we know work. We see that it works. It works in the school system. We have a responsibility to the to our children and future generations to step up.
Thank you, Susan. Melody, did you have?
There's nothing that infuriates me more than walking through the store and seeing people without masks.
Thank you, Susan.
At least I haven't been arrested yet.
Melody, did you have anything?
Um, I just I I agree with the things that you all said. And I think that we just have to be careful as as time goes here and things are getting escalated and the rumor mill is like rampant. I think we just have to be careful not to make decisions based on speculation as opposed to having evaluated the effectiveness of the COVID protocols that we have put in place. Like Susan just said, they are working, the distancing, hygiene, masks, all these things. And so I think that we need to, you gave us the percentages, and I did want to ask that Harold, didn't you actually say .027?
No, .27.
It is .27. Okay. Okay.
So I think what I said was .0027. I think .0027, 10,000ths.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
I miswrote that. So I did want to clarify that. And I lost my train of thought. So yes, and I I my kids, with Linda's question about that, I've had kids in all of the examples you've given, like in the elementary where they're still in their class, but a separate person has come to watch them for portions of the day. I've been in the middle school. I've had kids with the social studies in the large where they go to the team room. That's working. I've also had students in the where the someone is sitting in their class and the teacher is on the big blue button. So we've got examples of all the things, and they seem to be working. And I think that everyone's doing a good job of just coming up with creative ideas of how to keep the boat afloat.
I do think that it's important. We have a really, really good tech director, if you guys are not aware of how good Dean is. Without Dean, we would not be in this situation. We would have been discussing other other options. But Dean has found a way to to allow us to utilize the technology that exists. He's pretty darn good at his job. And and he is he is probably underappreciated, even though he's very appreciative or appreciated. He may be appreciative that he has a job at the end of this. But I think it's important. Harold talked about our maintenance and custodial staff and our transportation staff, food service, everybody that has has worked incredibly hard to to allow our students to come back to school and to not to this point, to not have any days of remote instruction, which when other districts have yet to have a day of in-person instruction. I think it speaks volumes to the to the efforts of our staff and to the dedication that they have to our students. And certainly, that is not lost upon me and very much appreciated.
You know, I've been wondering through this whole ordeal, is there any other profession, and we're talking about everybody that that works to keep our schools going. I don't know any other profession that could do what we've done these last few months. I mean, I know my life is small and limited, but we're pretty amazing in education, I think. I think we're amazingly resilient and innovative, and we should all be proud of that.
You know, listening to everybody, the rest of you all talk, it made me sit here and think, you know, what defines what we all have done from top to bottom to make it work, you know? And I think it's the first word that for our district, we're the unified unified school district of USD 290. And I think that summarizes what we've done. We've been unified. We've made tough decisions and sometimes not popular decisions. As you had said, you know, there's two sides to this. But I feel like every time we've risen to the occasion, done stuff that is not comfortable, is not ideal, but we figured out how to still keep our kids in buildings and educate them. And I don't know about anybody else, but I'm pretty proud of that.
All right. It sounds like at this point, we really don't need to take any action tonight because we're not going to make any changes. But it sounds like we what we will continue to do is is be updated regularly on where these numbers are, being ready to pivot if need be at whatever level we need to in order to keep everybody safe and everybody learning. So we can go ahead and move on to the next section on our report tonight, which is the KAS KSHSAA mask issue.
Yeah. So KESHA has put out, Dean, if we could look at the KESHA recommendations. So you all have seen the proposal. At the November 20, that one, you're going to see, yeah, you're going to see that they that the KESHA Board of Directors are breaking each one of these things down into into a vote, right? So each piece, Dean, if you scroll down there, you will see that starting here, they start voting each one of these things. So I can tell you that I think Mrs. Whitaker is probably well into 300 or 400 emails regarding this topic because she sits on the Board of Directors and has been receiving emails from our own community, from Lewisburg, from Paola, from from the Johnson County area, from all over the state regarding people's considerations. I haven't heard anybody indicate at this point that that they believe that any of these things as a whole are are worthwhile. But I haven't had a conversation with anybody about them yet either. So we need to we need to make sure that as Mrs. Whitaker goes into her discussion tomorrow, that she at least knows where our board stands. So if Dean would scroll back up, and this doesn't have to be a vote, we certainly don't have to vote on these things, but discussion, right? So the first one is that renovations to Rule 9 moratoriums. This would extend a period of no contact dates from December 23 through December 27 to proposed of December 23 through the 3. So in essence, the moratorium typically lasts over the winter holiday piece of it, and then students can come back to practice on the 28. This would say that they're going to get through New Year's and not come back to practice until January 4. Thoughts?
I my thought is that doesn't get you past the incubation period, correct? 14 days from the last time they're together till the time they come back?
No.
Since in my other life, I am an expert in coaching, I would like to tell the coaches what to do. I guess what I would say, just my personal opinion, is I think the coaches know what to do to keep their kids safe. know what to do to keep their kids safe. And so my personal belief is let the coaches, just like we do administrators, leave it to the coaches, decide what's safe.
Okay. Other thoughts?
As as Harold is saying, I know I keep going back to girls' middle school basketball, and it is not the same as high school, but it is what is happening. And we can see the results from it, the current things. And so, for example, they were supposed to have practices this week. Instead, our coaches gave them a schedule of practicing on your own and stuff they're supposed to do. They didn't have practice today, tomorrow. And so they have the practice schedule outlined, and you're supposed to do it on your own and have a parent sign that you did that. And so I think that's a great example of that coaches are intelligent and know what is best. And I think that supports that.
I would agree. Other thoughts on that one? Six and seven, I think we can, we can put together. So six is indicating that there's a moratorium, that there's nothing from December 1 through January 14. The seven, number seven is for middle school, that there's nothing from the from the 1st through the 14th. I guess what I've just heard is that that's not necessarily where this board would sit, that that needs to be in the hands of our coaches to determine whether or not they have practices or or games or whatever that happens to be in the in each building. That be correct? Okay. The next one is is no spectators. So in essence, this is, this is identifying that KESHA is saying that you're not allowed to have spectators for the period of January 15 through the 20th. Now remember that this is working under the assumption that the moratorium is in place till the 14th, right? So as they go through this, if they vote no on the moratorium, but vote yes on this one, then you can have fans up to the 14th, but then after the after the 15th, you would have no fans. This doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but we'll see how it goes. We already have our own gating protocols. I think you heard Dr. Ransom say here today that he's more concerned about about spectators than he is about our student athletes in part. And that's because spectators yell and do all sorts of stuff in the stands typically in close proximity to one another. But I would assume that that you would all feel that our gating protocol is is effective at this point.
Yeah, I mean, we're only given so many tickets anyways, right?
Right.
Per player, yeah.
Yep. So the next one continues that. So I think that so it's they then limit spectators. So I think that we can go on from there. Number 11 is face coverings. So again, you heard from Dr. Ransom tonight that he didn't, he didn't necessarily believe or know of any research that would indicate that it's a positive or negative for our students. So this in essence would would indicate that all, all student athletes across the state of Kansas would have to wear masks to play basketball and wrestle. Whether or not I believe that masks should be worn, I don't know how a wrestler keeps a mask on their face and wrestles at any level of of competition. They can't keep headgear on, which is strapped to them with any amount of reliability. I don't know how they intend to keep a cloth mask on their face, but.
I I read that a little bit differently. It said the only exception is provided for athletes during the time they are competing and for officials during active play.
Yeah, the next one, I believe, goes with the with the whole group.
Eleven.
Eleven and twelve.
Actually, no, they they may have changed it up on me. So, yes. So this is apparently just students, student athletes who are not in the in the game.
Okay.
I will tell you that they were considering one for for all athletes, and we've seen local counties do the same thing.
But as far as what they're talking about tomorrow, they don't have to wear them during the, okay, thank you.
Right. So anybody not on the field of play would or on the court would have to wear a mask. Anybody currently in the game would not, including officials, so.
Which is what we currently do anyway, right?
Which is what we currently do.
Isn't that what we did with football? They had gaiters or whatever to pull up?
Yeah. The next one is no invitational tournaments. Again, from what I've, what I've understood here today is that you would want to leave that in the hands of our ADs to make those decisions in terms of invitational tournaments. I can tell you already, most of our invitational tournaments have been canceled. So it's not really a huge issue for us, in part because many of the invitationals that we would be going to are currently in counties where they're not going to allow them. So you gotta, you gotta deal with that.
I, can I interject everyone saying, I understand that a lot of them are in counties we wouldn't go to. But I don't know that I would necessarily say to our AD that if there were other counties that wanted to participate in some sort of invitational. I only take volleyball as an example.
Yep.
We went to a few volleyball tournaments that I thought was very well run, safely run. And as far as I know, we didn't really come away with any deal. I understand volleyball is different than basketball. But I do think that from my perspective, if the AD finds the right situation and the coaches feel it's right, then I do agree with you. Leave it in their hands to say, hey, we would like to do this, you know, we think we can do it in a safe manner. But I agree with you. Leave it in the AD and the coaches' hands.
They're smart people. I think they can.
I think that's true.
They can do the right things. Number 13 is limiting the number of games. Again, this really goes back to a moratorium on sports until January 14. If it doesn't pass, this one basically becomes a moot point. And because you guys didn't necessarily agree with the moratorium, I have a hard time believing that this is where you want to go. We don't have swimming and diving. Rule 44 again goes back to the moratorium. This is about competition points and ultimately indicating that if you, if if they're starting in January, then they're going to limit the number of events that you can take so that you don't compress an entire season's worth of events into a much smaller period of time. Again, what I'm hearing from you is that that's not necessarily the way you'd want to go. Bowling, same thing there. And then same type of idea for for our for our fine arts. So what I'm hearing from the board, and please tell me otherwise, is that there is not a whole lot of this that the board feels like should fall in the hands of the KESHA when it can't be taken care of here locally. Is that what I'm, is that what I'm getting from most of you?
I think that is what you're getting from the board. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so I also kind of gleaned from this, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, that the that the next question that was associated with this was whether or not we want to create a situation in which our own players are required to wear masks. What I, what I gleaned from that is that no, leave it in the hands of coaches to make the the right decision at the right time.
Do you mean during play?
During play.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, very good.
I think you're correct. All right. So we do not need to take any extra action on that item this evening. We'll go ahead and move down to 6.03, which is remote practice. Dr. Cobb's?
Okay, so we do intend to keep all of our students in person. I think that we all recognize again that that remote still remains a possibility at some point in time based upon circumstances that that may lie outside of our control. One of the concerns that I think that we that we have is that we have never tried remote with the entirety of our student body. With 2,300 people drawing off of our, off of our servers, trying to to do things at a similar time and seeing how it responds, making sure that that our staff is really in tune to what it takes to run a remote classroom on a day-to-day basis and how our students might respond. We have many students who who have have not really had to do much of the remote, even in a hybrid model, that should they have to go remote, really don't have any idea how it, how they would respond to it in a home environment. So the the conversation that we've had is whether or not we need to have a remote practice. And there's a part of me that believes, and it's a large part, that believes that we do, that we can't get caught flat-footed should we have to move to remote very quickly, and that there are certain things that we're not going to know until we try. And I can guarantee you that no matter what happens, the first day of full remote will be an absolute mess, an absolute mess, trying to get 2,300 people to to do what they need to do. So we would actually propose, and we've had lots of conversations again with administrative staff about how this might work and what might need to happen with it. But a remote practice and two options. So in the update, I identified possibly doing it next Fri- next Friday, the week after we get back from from Thanksgiving break, which would give us a kind of a shortened day and an opportunity to debrief with with staff about what went right and what went wrong. As we thought more about this as an administrative group, one of the concerns that we had with that is that one day, it probably does not give us the data that we're going to need off of it because that one day we know is going to be messy. And it's, it just will. It will, it will be a mess. And it's really day two that's probably going to show us what we really need to see as people become more accustomed to to what we do. So recognizing that there is some concern and anxiety about an upcoming break and the the assembly, I think, as Julie put it, of people together over over Thanksgiving. We came up with an idea that would actually have a remote practice on Monday and Tuesday after spring break. So that would be the 28th and 29th, what is today? So the the 30th and the 1st, right? This would do a couple of things for us. One, I believe Thanksgiving is on a Thursday, which would then give us five clear days before any students return to our buildings. Typically, they're saying that we that we can see symptoms within seven days, five days is pretty close to that. And anybody that would be in that environment, hopefully, we're beginning to see symptoms by then versus just three days as they start coming back to our schools and ultimately, we create the safer environment there. Two, it gives us a full week to prepare our our staff, even though it's Thanksgiving break. I think more than anything, they they should have been preparing for remote instruction this whole time. It's been a part of of what we've done. It was a part of the conversations when we pushed school back to September 9, was that this is a possibility for how we're going to have to educate our kids. And subsequently, we should be prepared for it. But there is nothing like actually going through the event and being able to do so prior to having to be in the event. Certainly lends itself to to an opportunity to to improve. So we would actually make the recommendation tonight that we determine that the 30th and the 1st are remote practice days for our district, and that our students stay home on those days, and that we communicate to parents that they will be remote practice on those days. We have plans in place and discussions about how we deal with special education, how we deal with preschool, all of those things. But to ensure that we can, we can do this effectively should we need to do it, and also provide us a little bit of latitude as we come back from Thanksgiving break, still with the notion that on Wednesday, we intend to return to school in a in a full in-person setting and be ready to go. But I would be happy to answer any questions or have any discussion, discussion that are you all might have about it.
So you said, what got me lost on the dates was I think you said spring break.
Oh, yeah.
So I was like, is he talking after?
We'll put it off till then. It'll be fine.
Thanksgiving break. So you're talking after Thanksgiving break, we would do, okay.
Yes, yes, the Monday and Tuesday directly following Thanksgiving break.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Just a clarification, and I know you said this, but I I just want to repeat it, that we will open up Wednesday morning at normal time.
Yes.
Under normal functions, and we will resume class.
All students.
Any notions of any other deal we're opening?
No, I I think it's important to to help people understand that this is not a precursor to anything else. This is not like a, hey, we're going to sneak this one in on you. This is simply a, we don't want to be caught without the ability to do the things that we think that we can do remotely. And and in an environment in which we can prepare for that versus being caught off guard and say, oh, my God, this is happening. We got to go remote right now. Knowing the ins and outs of what that environment is, what's going to work well, what students we have to address, when when we, when and if we ever have to get to a a true remote environment, if you remember when we went back to a a continual learning plan, this board had discussed not having any small groups, not having groups less than 10, send teachers home, make sure we took care of them. And that's what, that's what took place in in the spring. I don't think that our remote environment looks like that if we have to get there now. I think we start talking about small groups coming in. I think preschool probably continues to to attend that way. We may have to do some things. People attending and engaging life skills programs may have to continue to attend in person. I think if we have students that need to meet their teacher in person, that they, that we provide some avenues for them to continue to meet in person, even though holistically, we may be doing some things remotely. So it's very different than what people remember from continual learning, and we've had many of those discussions. But I think it's important for us to understand how our district would function in this environment if everybody had to go remote, and understanding what the capacities and our limitations are in that environment so that we don't expect more than we can deliver and ultimately overpromise and under deliver with our with our community.
Okay, second point, and then a third point. Second point is, it's required attendance on Monday and Tuesday. And if you don't show up, you will be counted absent. Teachers will provide normal instructions as best as they can and normal expectations for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and all that. Is that correct?
Absolutely. This is school. Coming to school, you're just going to stay home doing it. So all of our, all of our staff will be preparing lessons for the entire day. So from a high school standpoint, they start class at 7:45. They're going to have class from 7:45 to 8:30 for first period. And all of those kids are going to remote in and see what that, that same teacher is going to have the next class from 8:35 to 9:40 and so on and so forth. Each one of those periods are going to meet. You can expect to be online basically for seven and a half hours or whatever it happens to be, minus lunch and transition periods.
Correct.
So it it may be a situation in which, you know, you gain instruction and then you have the opportunity to work independently, which which may mean that you don't have to be engaging with it with a teacher at that point. But what we want to make sure is that that our, our remote learning and what we what we may have to do down the road, but not our intent to do, is that that it is not the model that we've seen in other district, which is teachers check in with your with your student for 10 minutes, and then they have the next seven hours of the day to to do packet work. If we ever have to go remote, the intention of of our district is that we have a remote school day that is the same timeframe as a normal school day, and that our teachers are engaging our students in instruction during that entire time.
And last point, and then I'll let somebody else take over. If we do this on Monday and Tuesday, it's a normal school day. So any practices or extracurricular activities still can happen as normal as planned, just it as if we were in in school.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. We'll also provide lunch. We'll have to have people come to to the pickup sites to get their lunch, but we will provide lunch for folks on that day as well.
Okay.
And breakfast.
And breakfast. Okay.
Any other questions, Miss Melody?
I I actually really liked the December 4 date better than this because while I understand if it did come to where we would have to be remote all of a sudden, you would have to be prepared, like you're saying, the teachers should have been doing all that and everything. However, we have just been spending quite a bit of time talking about how taxing all of this has been for them. And I would hate to ruin, not ruin, but put extra stress or distraction on the break, the upcoming break of them going in to try and have things prepared or try and rush to, you know, stress out about tomorrow, like, ah, I wasn't ready for this, you know? And so whereas if we waited till the December 4, they could have, it wouldn't be on their their vacation or their break, their holiday break. So I really liked that. And then Friday's families that have to, it's already a shortened day. So families that will have the childcare, they would, they already have something kind of figured out because it is a shortened day. So it wouldn't put as much inconvenience for them. So I don't know if you think we need the two days, if if we could do it like on Thursday and Friday instead of Monday and Tuesday, if you think we do need the two days or whatever. But I just.
I think we're going to see more of what we need to see in terms of what remote instruction really looks like on day two versus day one. I think there'll be so much getting used to the system that we won't really gain a lot of insight about what what instruction looks like in that environment. It really does not impact me a whole lot whether we go Monday and Tuesday or Thursday and Friday. We did have the conversation with our administrative staff. And again, I think that they felt like it would, even though it would be additional work for our staff to prepare for Monday and Tuesday, that they thought that the counteraction of the lessened anxiety from not returning immediately from from Thanksgiving break would be beneficial there. And subsequently, they were, they were more inclined to the they were they were more inclined to the Monday and Tuesday. But either way, I think what's important for me is that we we find a time to do a remote practice and that we give ourselves some understanding of how well we can do this. Again, I think our administrators were more in support of the Monday and Tuesday, but if if this board thinks that Thursday and Friday is better suited for us and what we want to do in communicating with parents and preparation, then I think either of those days work work for us.
Any other questions?
I I just had one more question, kind of Harold brought it up about the, so if I, again, here I am with that middle school basketball, I know you guys are getting tired of it. But so say, say, you know, say we did the Thursday and Friday or the Monday and Tuesday, so they have games on Mondays and Thursdays. So if someone, it's just a total train wreck and they aren't on there, even though they tried, are they still going to be eligible?
They just have to communicate effectively with with people. So we'll we'll use middle school basketball as the example, right? So typically, you would have to be at school for at least a half a day to participate in the activity. If something is going on with your remote environment that you can't do so, then then really what they need to do is they need to communicate with Mr. Cost to say, hey, look, I'm trying to get on remotely, this is what's happening, it's not, it's not allowing us to do so, and and communicate what the problems are. The the purpose of this is to troubleshoot the problems and and know what it is, not to create an accountability model that that is a gotcha situation to take things away from kids. We want to make sure that the expectation is that they are they are where they're supposed to be in terms of of their class, that that this isn't a, hey, I don't have to go to school on Monday and I still get basketball or it's Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday, whichever day it is, I think it's Monday, that it's it's not a situation where they just don't have to attend school because they don't want to. The expectation is they attend school. We certainly expect that some of our students will will encounter difficulties. If they do, they just need to communicate effectively. They, one of the things that I'm fairly positive of is that we've we've rarely, if ever, had a wholesale problem with our email to where it has not worked for an entire day, right? All they got to do is email Mr. Cost and let him know what's going on, let us troubleshoot shoot some issues with them, and make sure that they can continue to participate in the afternoons.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments before we take action?
I would just like to say, I can see either date, I can see pros and cons for what Molyneux said and what Dr. Cobb suggested. So I mean, I guess for me, one, I think we do need to do it so we don't get caught flatfooted. The pro I can see from Lydia's is at least that gives teachers a little more prep time, families a more prep time, so there's not this angst. I mean, I think we have enough angst as it is. So maybe we, like Wednesday at the end of the day, everybody can like cross their Ts and dot their Is and make sure they're ready for Thursday, Friday remote. So I'm okay with whatever we want to do, but I appreciate Molyneux's point.
Yep.
Anyone else? Susan, did you have something? Or is that just you moving your hand?
I did, no. I was just thinking if we're not going to, you know, we're going to let the coaches make the decisions on the masking and doing what's right for our kids, I think our administrators can too, so whatever days it works out for you all, it should be fine.
Okay.
You know?
I agree with Susan.
You what?
I agree with you, Susan. I think the administrators have have talked about this and and thought about all the all the what ifs, and I agree with what they've decided.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Do we have to approve this?
We do. We're taking some action.
So, Madam President, I move that we we have, where am I, remote practice? I I move that we approve the remote practice for November 30th and December 1st as the administrators recommend.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I think you guys tied there. It was moved by Linda Alderman and seconded at the same time by Chris Cunningham and Susan Ward that we approve the plan to offer remote practice on the day specified by administration. We will do a rule call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie D'Andrio?
Yes.
Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Molyneux Payne?
Just because of the date, I'm going to vote no.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
That passes six to one. And we are down to the sped report.
We made it to the end of me talking, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Robinson here.
Mr. Robinson's going to talk with us, give us the sped report here this evening.
So this is an unusual topic for us to bring to the board, but it's one that we're right in the middle of, and so I'll run through things quickly, but I think it's important that you all have a good idea of what we're working on as it's a fairly legal process that we're working through. So compensatory services are typically something that we deal with maybe a student a year, and our most common issue is either a student moves into us and we don't get services, we don't get their IEP right away, and so we have to go back and make up services that we missed. Or it also comes up if we have an OT or a speech language pathologist that leaves our district and we're not able to cover those services right away. So it's unusual for us to have to look at all 450 or 460 students that we have on IEPs at one time. But keep in mind, as far as free and appropriate public education is concerned, the IEP is our offer to those students as to what that looks like. Anytime we deviate from it without communicating with parents, we could be on the hook for compensatory services. So I'm going to try really quickly to explain where we're needing to look at this and what we've done moving forward to hopefully avoid a situation like this in the future. So as you remember, last year, we had a number of things happen, and I'll talk through them very quickly. So we had about a two-week window right around spring break where schools were closed completely. The governor, governor's office closed schools. We didn't provide any education to any students for about two weeks. Because we didn't provide anything to any student, we're not required to provide special education students during that time. So as far as our team is concerned right now, we're not looking at that two-week window as part of the block of time we would need to provide compensatory services. Starting March 30th, when we started providing education to all students, we went to parents and because of the pandemic, the state of Kansas allowed us to say, here's what we're offering to you during this block of time to help your child make progress. And because of the pandemic, we weren't required to get parents to say, yes, that's okay. So because we made that change without their permission, which happened all over the state of Kansas, so this isn't just an Ottawa School District issue, that block from March 30th until the end of the school year, we would be required to look at students and determine whether compensatory services are necessary. Moving forward, we've done some things to help help our situation. So there are states that do this every year, they have a part of their IEP. Most of these are schools that are in states that already do snow days remotely, and so they have services built into their IEP that if they go remote, here's what their services would look like in remote learning. We took that example and added a form to all of our IEPs at the beginning of the year. So in September, part of that first two-week process was for our providers, we amended every IEP in our system. And what we did was we protected our original offer. We wanted to make sure that what we, our IEP team said were best for students, that that's still there, and when we're in person, that's still what we're providing. And what we put in in place was an additional form that said if we were to go hybrid or if we were to go remote, here are the services the IEP team would provide for that student. So what this does is it makes it real easy if the if the board was to to determine sometime later this school year that we need to go remote for a period of time, we don't have to go back and amend IEPs. That's already built in. We're also not up for compensatory services moving forward because parents have agreed to the changes that we made to their IEP this time around. So hopefully, we've done some things, and I would recommend at this point that for the foreseeable future, that we keep a similar form in our IEPs and we work forward. There are some requests to, at the state and federal level, to waive compensatory services. I will just tell you, they haven't waived anything yet, and I don't see this being one of those pieces that they're going to waive. So in my mind, it's best for our district to go ahead and move forward with with identifying what we need to provide for these students. So we've started working with our teams, and to try and keep from overwhelming our providers, we've broken it up into three phases. The first phase we're in the middle of right now, so what we're really doing, and which is a good practice for us anyway, is we're looking closely at our data. We're going back to the last data we had from the end of the third quarter last year, and we're comparing it to where our students are now and looking to see, did they make progress? Did we see regression? There are places, speech is a good example. Many of our speech students have maintained or or we've seen progress being made, but I would tell you, there are there are research-based models for providing speech services through teletherapy that some of our people utilized during that time. There are other areas where we're seeing regression, and so we're trying to take a close look at is, how how big is that regression, but also, how does it compare to their normal pattern? Because the nice thing with MAP and Fastbridge is we can see on a lot of our students, do every summer, do we see a dip and they come back up? So we're watching for some of those patterns. The other thing that's challenging right now, and I think Chris mentioned it earlier, is we've seen multiple grade levels where every student has declined. There's not, there are studies being conducted, but there's nothing right now for us to draw from to say our special ed students were impacted the same as everybody else. We're kind of throwing that piece out right now and saying if they, if we saw regression, we want to move to that second phase and look at what services were missed. So we will end this phase December 4th, we'll pull our group back together, and we'll talk through the second phase, so we've tried to break it into pieces. So hopefully, this piece we've asked for them to do on every student in our system, which is 400 and something students on IEPs. My hope is that it's a really small number that we're really looking at, that have have regression and that we really need to go into the the next phase with. So the next piece of this, if they regressed, if we saw a loss, we'll go back and look at what services were missed. And part of this is to give us some idea of how much do we need to make up, what do we need to provide moving forward? So we'll do that prior to Christmas break, and our hope in doing that is that our teams would be prepared, if they already have IEP meetings the second half of the year, that they'd be prepared when they meet with those families to have good discussions about what compensatory services might look like. So in past, what we've done is a number of things. One, there are some students that the gap will be minimal, the services that weren't provided will be pretty small, and we can add either another session or we can lengthen the sessions that we would already have throughout the second semester and make up services. Some of our most intensive students, our students in our functional or life skills classrooms, in our behavior programs, if they saw regression, it's going to be really hard to make it up during the school year. So some of those, we'll look at our summer services, and we'll look at some other options for providing their services. And I would also guess when we approach families, some of our families are at that point where they understand the challenges that have been presented to schools. They understand that their teams have done a good job of communicating, they've done the best they can in providing services. Parents will have the option of saying, yes, we want these services, or no, we don't. I would tell you, in my five years of doing this, most of the time when we offer compensatory services, parents will say, no, we don't want to add any more to what our students are already receiving, that there's just not enough time in their schedule to do that. So there's a lot at play here. My hope is that our teams have done a good job of communicating early and that we've done the best job we can in providing services because hopefully, it will save us a lot in what we're what we have to offer at this time. But I did think it was important for the board to know what we're working through as it's a real unusual process. The state of Kansas continues to tell us that they will provide us guidance on this process. I'm yet to receive anything, and so we are, we're looking at what's been done in other places, working closely with our team and with other districts around us to make the best process, but I don't want to keep putting this off and letting the gap get wider for our students. I think it's something that we need to go ahead and address, and hopefully, we've shored up our processes moving forward where we'll add very few compensatory services. The one place I can see that we could add some is as our staff is being pulled to help cover other classrooms, there may be some spots where we see a consistent pattern, and I'm asking our staff to just keep track of that, and we'll make sure that we're doing what's best for our kids and making up those services as necessary. But do you guys have questions for me? Chris?
Did you say we have 400 students on IEPs or eligible for the?
Yeah, I haven't looked at the exact number. Typically, we're around right now 450 to 460 students who are on IEPs currently.
But we.
That includes speech and gifted and.
Yeah, but we do have more than that that's eligible, if I understood what you're saying, that some of them, some parents actually turn down the service.
Some will turn down, yeah. You are correct. But what I'm referring to is when we offer compensatory services here, some of our parents, even though their child is eligible for those services, they have the option of whether they accept them or not. Some don't want summer services, some don't want additional time out of the classroom, so there's a lot of reasons that they may refuse them.
Thank you.
Harold?
Okay, so if I understand and say it right, the 450 IEPs between basically early December and December 20th, you're going through all 450, everybody on IEP.
Everybody on IEP.
Gets reviewed.
Yep.
We're going to identify any shortcomings, that gaps that may exist. And it's our intention to make up those gaps in the second half of the school year post January 1.
Yep.
Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, and so there's a number of things that are going on. Mrs. Fanning is, has been tremendous in in this process, so she's also working with some of our providers because there are some students that have just maintained, and we're hoping that if we approach parents about adjusting strategies or adjusting our approach, that rather than pulling them out or pulling them in over the summer, we're able to meet their needs that way. She's also helping teams in problem solving through this process because it's new for everybody, so having having somebody else to go in and work with teams. But you're spot on in what we're trying to do at this point.
Okay, and then my last follow-up might be is, are you a follow-up, say, towards end of the year, let's just call it May, and do the same evaluation on 450 people to make sure that what we said we were going to do on December 20th actually got implemented? And I think it'd be beneficial at least for me as a board member to kind of hear that, you know, here's what we identified in December, and here's what we put in place. I don't mean all 450, you know what I mean, big picture. And because I think it is important that, as we've discussed, summer slide, COVID slide, every other slide that could even imagine, okay, that we tried to help mitigate that as we navigate this. So I think that'd be interesting information by end of the year to kind of say, hey, this what we identified, this what we did, and here are the results.
Yeah, we can definitely come back and provide an update. I would say there are some students that we may not make a determination right now because if they've maintained, we may monitor some students a little bit further before we make a decision to, to see as we provided instruction, do we see them start to trend back up? It's been a good practice for our team in that we're diving really deep into the data that we have, and so I think some of our teams are getting more practice in just how are we using data, how are we using our IEP goals? So I think there's a benefit long term to our system right now, but it is a lot of work on our special ed providers.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Robinson, I just want to say thank you, to you and your team for all this work. It has been, our special ed department is a huge part of our district and affects so many kids and families, and you have had to do so many things because of COVID and changes in services and without guidance, you know, from from the state. We sure appreciate it, and it certainly shows with the satisfaction from our families that are receiving services and this exists of our students, so thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate that. I work with a tremendous team, and I, you know, we've talked a lot about it, the other people, we've, we've just, as teachers, we've got a lot of our providers that are putting in a lot of time, they're committed to doing what's best for their kids, and we've asked a ton of them over the last nine months, so I appreciate all that they're doing to keep us afloat. And I think it, the, we get very few complaints from parents right now about the services we're providing, which is huge in this time, especially as you watch other districts. which is huge in this time, especially as you watch other districts that are really struggling with how they're providing these services. So I attribute that all to our team. So I appreciate the compliment, but it's our team that's doing a great job of providing these services.
Well, and I think their communication with families has been extraordinary. I have not heard any, of any of the districts that are going to the level that we have gone to, to communicate consistently with families, and it's very impressive. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, 6.05, we've got, Mr. Grell is going to give us a technology update.
Thank you. Dr. Cobb asked me to come talk a little bit about our E-Rate project that we're doing this year, and I wanted to take a bit of time in front of that to talk about a couple other highlights. We typically do a March or April update for technology, and that kind of got thrown by the wayside this year. So, we'll do a little bit here. I want to start with last year's tickets, mainly because from the entire school year last year, well, 1920, we had over 2,100 tickets that we solved for staff, and a little bit of students used, they used some of that as well. With an average of 7.3 days to resolution for the entire, each ticket, and then 3.2 days to the initial response, which is kind of high. But it makes sense when you look at our metrics and see that all issues come through the help desk, whether they are seven teachers reporting the same thing, or if it's a long-term project on the help desk, that 3.2 days to response isn't really as rude as it looks, like we just ignore people for three days. Fast forward to this year, and again, that was over the entire school year. Thus far, we've had over 2,000 tickets. I can't put the number, because from last Wednesday, it's already up another probably 200, in less than four months. And we're averaging 30.5 days to resolution, and 10.9 days to the initial response. Now, these numbers look way worse. But what I will tell you is that these numbers always look horrible at the beginning of the year, because the mass influx of tickets come in. This year is our first year that parents can enter help desk tickets, students all over the school enter help desk tickets. And right now, what you will see is that we have probably every morning when we come in, about 70 tickets. And then from the morning, the second we sit down, to the first hour of the day, that number jumps up. And then jumps up some more, jumps up some more, and then waivers throughout the day. We leave at the end of the day, and we have 70-something tickets. Come in the next morning, we have 70-something tickets. It's just the same thing over and over and over and over again. So we're going to institute a day where we just take our ticket system and flip it over, and work from the bottom up. But hopefully, not impede any of the other stuff that's going on in the day, because sometimes it's more pressing. So when we say 10.9 days to response, some of those tickets that we've been waiting on, we catch up, we close it, and that gives us, you know, a pad of 20 days to our resolution time average, or whatever. So, the numbers look horrible, but we'll own them. Chromebooks. So, Chromebooks are supposed to come in next month, but they're here. They came way ahead of schedule, and they're distributed, we're all done, they're out there, they're being used. They were well-received by our OMS and OHS students. We've heard good things. OMS had five invoices generated. Now, OMS did have used devices that our sixth graders came in with, that were handed to them, already used. They took wonderful care of them, they didn't have cases on them, but still, they were extra careful with them. We were not super sticklers for damage, but there wasn't a lot at all. And of those five invoices, they were all for chargers, which the students can, I don't know if they have yet, but they can bring the charger back in, we wipe the invoice, and there would be no invoices. I know for sure, one middle schooler said they don't know where their charger is, so they just got charged for it, but that's okay. High school, we didn't have numbers up there on Wednesday, because we hadn't done it yet. But we had 26 invoices generated at the high school, and those were devices they had for all four, or, yeah, all three years, I guess, in middle school. And 10 of those were for chargers. So 16 of them were collecting damages on. The bulk of the issues were a $16 piece that breaks on those Chromebooks. So, very, very, very good shape those devices came back in. E-Rate. So this will be our fourth major E-Rate project that we've done since I've been here. And there's a bit of a rule change this year that's kind of helping us in our favor. E-Rate category two. So E-Rate category one, just a quick review, pays for our internet. E-Rate category two pays for getting the internet to our students. So we get $167 of government subsidized money per student for these infrastructure improvements. And those, the actual cost of the projects, those funds can be used to subsidize 80% of the total project. And it's based on our free and reduced lunch counts. So, free and reduced lunch counts this year were kind of up in the air, because the USDA allowed for free lunches for all students. So our free and reduced lunch applications significantly dropped. I wouldn't say significantly, but quite a bit. So the FCC is allowing a one-time waiver for us to say, can we use last year's FRL numbers? And that's our percentage. And they said, yep, let's do that. So our FRL last year was 54%, which puts us in that 80% discount all the way across the board for category one and category two. So all of our services that we qualify for, we get an 80% discount because of that FRL number. Our proposed project at OMS, we've been talking about this since 2018, and it's just kind of gone by the wayside, because while it wasn't immediately pressing, we knew it was an issue, but even if we don't do this now, it'll still run. It'll still work, and we'll still get complaints. But, it still works. It hasn't been super, a major focus. It really came into focus when, it's actually been planned for a while, but it's, it really came into focus when our high school was displaced to the middle school, and our teachers said, why is this network so slow? Just from walking from one building to the other, they said, something is wrong here. And we know what it was, we've known about it for a while. And what it is, without going too much into these 20 slides that talk about what it is exactly, there's a cable that was put in that building when it was built that runs at 1/10th the speed of every other cable we have in the entire district, with the exception of Eugene Field. So, if we want to go into all of the rigmarole on the next few slides, we can. But it runs at 1/10th of the speed. And when we did like our safety and security projects, we put the new cable in there. So not every single cable runs at 1/10th the speed, but of the 750, over 700 of those cables run at 1/10th of the speed. That's the max they can ever do. Additionally, if we go through a few of these slides, we see this up in the ceilings a lot, and those are typically telecom terminals used to twist wires together, which is not allowed in network cabling. We find this up in the ceilings all the time. And what's not very well-known with these wires is that there's eight wires in there, and they're all twisted together by color pair. So pair of wires, pair of wires, pair of wires, pair of wires, they're all twisted together. The number of twists per foot makes the cable work. So if the cable comes unwound purposefully, like this is shown, the cable may not work, or it introduces what's called cross talk. So this was working. It was not working anywhere near the rated highest speed, and it never would. But we see this, we pull it out and run a brand-new cable to replace it. Additionally, when you come back down into the wall where the cable plugs in for the teacher desk, if we have to fix anything in that panel, we just replace the entire thing. We can pull that panel off, pull the jack out, and it crumbles in your hand. So, subpar equipment going in, and it is at its lifespan of about 15 to 20 years is the lifespan for cabling and for the connectors. So it's a great time to replace it for an 80% discount. As far as the new cable going in, we have two real viable options, category six and category 6A. Really, category 6A is kind of an expensive cable, about twice, a little over twice the cost of category six, when you talk about 1,000 feet of cable. But category 6A is your future-proof. And we run 6A at the high school to all of the access points. Excuse me, and then 6 everywhere else. When we talk to other schools, they also run the 6A wire to the access points, because 90% of our internet traffic is going through the access points now anyway. And then 6A inside the data center, and then the regular 6 cable to workstations and labs. The other network inside the middle school is a fiber network, so we're sending data via light and glass. The fiber that's in that building, again, runs at, it can max out at 10 gigabits per second. And it is OM1 and OM2 fiber. OM3 and OM4 fiber can max out at 100 gigabits per second. Our entire district right now runs at 10 gigabits per second, so it's susceptible to damage and crush, crush events. It's also susceptible to rodents. I hope there's no rodents up there, but we've seen it before, usually outside the buildings. And the, the, the transceivers we have spares of work best with the OM3 and OM4 cables. So as we move to replace this wire, it's best to do it all right now, when they're all in there in the ceiling. We also have one room currently that is not running on fiber at all. It's running on the old category 5 cable. The entire wing of this building is running on that switch. So, definitely time to replace that as well. Worth noting that all elementary schools, except for Sunflower, have what's called single-mode fiber and multi-mode fiber between every network closet. Single-mode fiber is overkill, extremely overkill. Number one, number two, we can't buy it right now anyway, because of issues with procurement. But it can push about 100 gigabits per second, nearly 25 miles. So, inside the building, from one closet in one hallway to another closet in this hallway over here, there's single-mode fiber. If we ever want to put a data center anywhere in the district, let's go to an elementary school, because their capacity is tremendous. Additionally, on top of that cost, the, of the build of single-mode fiber, the optics to make that fiber work at that speed are really, really, really expensive. And the multi-mode fiber optics that we have plenty of, that we are stocked up on, are not as expensive. And again, we have tons of them, so if there is an issue or one of those goes bad, making light turn into data, we can just pull it out and put anyone in there. That's it. We did have companies come to a mandatory walkthrough to prevent companies that are nowhere near us from bidding on this. We did have a tremendous showing of contractors. We did two walkthrough dates, and said, pick one, show up, walk through the middle school with us. Students were in the building, they got to see the environment, they got to see our data center, they got to see all of our switches. And we had 11 or 12 companies show up for these meetings. E-Rate projects are structured so that we go out for bid. We give them our bid spec that we built with the high school build. We give them that bid spec that says, here's our wiring preferences, here's our fiber preferences, our fiber cassettes, our terminations, our patch panel layout, everything is in the fiber spec, or wire spec. We turn that over to them, they all bid on our project, and then the project comes back to you. So, ultimate approval sits in your hands still. We will get a funding commitment decision letter from USAC that'll say, yes, your project has been approved for this amount. We come here, and the final savior is with the board. So if the board says, we're not in a good spot right now, we thought we were, we're not going to do this project anymore, scrap it, we do that. If it's a great bid, or a great project, and the bids come back favorably, we pick one, we move forward. So, the bid lies entirely in your hands still, even though there is federal money attached to it. And there's a wild, wild process for the entire E-Rate paperwork trail. That's just, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of work. Any questions about the middle school and category 6 cable, which Linda has told me is her favorite?
So how did those wires get like that?
I would make assumptions.
Okay.
I can tell you that some of it looks like it was put in that way.
That was what I was afraid of.
Yep, yep. So what you also can't do is take a network cable and splice it off in two different directions. Now, anyone watching this that has been working with technology for any amount of time knows that what I just said is not completely true. If you have a gigabit network, which is what we have at the high school, you cannot do that. If you're running at the 1/10th the speed, you only require four cables, four wires, out of that shielded jacket to make that connection. So what some people did to save money is run that whole cable over here, break off four this way, break off four this way, to get two runs with one cable. That also hurts us significantly when we go back to replace them. It's, it's not fun to pull that cable out and redo it all. But sometimes they'll splice the cables, like you saw in that picture. That was the, like a cut, a run that got cut in the middle, and they just resplice it to make it reach further. Not acceptable. When we had the high school project done, we had a brand-new run for a brand-new access point that was run to a junction box, which is acceptable. And then the junction box carried another cable and went off this way, back to the access point. We went back to the contractor and said, this is a brand-new run. Like, we get that you have a junction box in remodels and what have you, but it was a brand-new run, and they had to come back and rebuild it, because every junction degrades that signal. So when we have splices, when we have junction boxes, we want to eliminate all of that and get a good network from the get-go, so that our kids can get on our network.
So do these contractors, do they have to be, do they have to have inspections? Or is that something we're going to have you kind of watch and to make sure that this does not happen again?
So what I know is that several of these companies are very reputable companies that are what's called Bixi-certified. I don't know if you're aware of Bixi? Bixi Building Inter, I don't even want to try to figure out what the acronym is. But what I can also tell you is that part of our bid spec requires cable testing and cable certification. And there are cable standards that you hook up a machine to a cable, and it tells you if it's within spec. That should be our, our insurance, is if everything hits cable spec. The ones I'm concerned about are the fiber, and it requires a five-figure machine that will do what's called an OTDR test, another acronym, Optical Time Delivery, something, that tests that wire, and it'll tell you exactly how long it is down to the inch, and any degradation in the line. And if they come back with a perfect OTDR test, we sign off on it with board approval, and we're done.
Okay.
Cable does carry a 15- to 20-year warranty, depending on manufacturer. The ones that we specify are minimum 15, but they go up to 20, depending on which manufacturer they choose. E-Rate does frown upon us saying, we want this exact cable. We have to always say, or functional equivalent.
Harold, did you have a question?
What timeline do you look at this?
So we've had that discussion with our E-Rate consultant, and with these individuals as well. It's going to be interesting to get them in the buildings to get this completed. We are working with CRW, which is our E-Rate consultant right now, to push out our question and bid submission deadline, because for some reason, whoever scheduled this, it was me, put both of the walkthrough dates the day before questions were due, and questions were due on a Saturday. So, I don't know why we did that. I picked Thursday, Friday, and they said question Saturday. That was them, I'll hold them to that one. So we're going to push our question deadline out a little bit further. We're going to submit a few more drawings that were requested. We don't have a good, shored-up timeline on when even we can start. We have to have that funding commitment decision letter. We have to have the board's approval on the project. This looks most like a summer project. And we did talk with our contractors about, if there was any opportunity to get into the building, if we were remote, if that were to happen, we could evaluate that. But I don't think that's something that we're going to be looking at, specifically because we still have staff in the buildings.
Yeah, so it's a summer project?
It's a large summer project, yes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you so much, Dean, appreciate it.
Perfect, thank you.
So up next, we have the neighborhood revitalization, and we've all read this. I'm not sure that we really need to have a presentation on it unless we need, unless folks feel like they'd like to have an active discussion. If not, we'd move right to action. All right, would somebody like to make an action to approve the neighborhood revitalization request as presented?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Chris Cunningham and seconded by Harold Wingert, that we approve the neighborhood revitalization request as presented. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Shanda Olmsted?
Yes.
Melodya Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.